Now.
Are we ready? Recording? Very good. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, May 5, 2025. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella. Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, welcome, everyone. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Those of you who are here physically in the audience and those of you enjoying the meeting from the comforts of your home, welcome. First section of tonight's agenda is the proclamation and presentation section, and we have several proclamations we'd like to issue tonight. The first is a proclamation recognizing May 4 through 10, 2025, as Water Week. And for this, Councilmember Lorisella will join President of the Lakewood Water District, John Corsmo, and General Manager Marshall Meyer at the podium.
All right. I get to do Water Week this week, which is, which is special. Because I know Mr. Corsmo, I've known for a long time in the city, and he's done a great job. And I know our formal general manager, Randy, who retired, was also a close friend. So we'll go ahead and get started. Whereas water is a fundamental part of our everyday lives and serves as the basic support system for all life on our planet. And whereas water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life our residents enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, and support for our economy. And whereas hard work is performed by the entire water sector, whether designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the residents of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims May 4, 2025, through May 10, 2025, as Drinking Water Week in the city of Lakewood, and urges all residents to observe the week with activities to enhance awareness about drinking water and the benefits of drinking water. Proclaimed today, the 5th day of May, 2025, signed by Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the rest of the council. Thank you. If you'd like to speak, feel free.
Sure. Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for this proclamation of Water Week. As was just described, drinking water is very foundational, and clean water and access to water is very foundational throughout history for any successful and thriving community. In particular, as the city looks into endeavors on more affordable housing, that access to safe drinking water is even more vital than ever before. The average day last year in Lakewood, residents used about 7.5 million gallons a day of water. And that is provided by our 24/7, by our pumping team and our distribution team. And in large part through support of in partnership with Citi as well. World Health Organization estimates that nearly 2 billion people worldwide do not have access to safe drinking water. And so I think we are all very fortunate here in Lakewood that we do have that, and we don't have to worry about it when we turn on our tap that it's safe to drink. And so again, thank you for your support and continued partnership with the Lakewood Water District.
Thank you guys very much. John, you want to say something? John, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Got it. All right.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of May, 2025, as Hunger Awareness Month. And Claire, are you here, Director of Development for Emergency Food Network? Oh, great. So join me at the podium and deliver the proclamation. Well, we are excited and proud tonight to present this proclamation to our representatives from Emergency Food Network for Hunger Awareness Month. As we all know and appreciate, EFN is not only an incredible service provider here in our community, they are a local business and nonprofit located here in Lakewood. So it's especially a proud moment for us to recognize EFN and its role with Hunger Awareness Month. Whereas the number of adults, children, seniors, active military, and veterans in Pierce County seeking food assistance has risen by 130% since 2019, underscoring the growing hunger crisis in our community. And whereas it is important to address the food insecurity endured by the children in Lakewood, as the well-being of our children is an investment in our community's future health, education performance, and economic vitality. And whereas local food pantries are currently serving an average of 284,000 visits every month from people struggling with unemployment, underemployment, and other physical and economic challenges. And whereas Emergency Food Network aims to distribute 20 million pounds of food this year to its more than 75 partner food pantries, meal sites, and shelters. And whereas rising food costs affect Lakewood residents and the local emergency food system, and have already resulted in increased visits to the emergency food systems. And now, therefore, the City Council proclaims May, 2025, as Hunger Awareness Month here in the city of Lakewood. And we encourage all residents to support Hunger Awareness Month and recognize Emergency Food Network and its allies for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to providing food for the residents in the city of Lakewood and Pierce County. Proclaim this 5th day of May, 2025, all of us here in the City Council. And thank you, Claire, for appearing tonight on behalf of EFN. Laura's yours.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Whalen, thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council. Thank you for once again recognizing May as Hunger Awareness Month. The WSDA, Washington State Department of Agriculture, reported last year that 1 in 4 Washington residents visited a food pantry in the 2024 fiscal year. So the level of need that we are seeing in Lakewood, in Pierce County, and across the state is just monumental. Any one of us who's gone to a grocery store or done any shopping for basic needs recently can attest to just how expensive basic needs are becoming for our community. We recognize May as Hunger Awareness Month because 70,000 students in Pierce County are about to leave school where they get free or reduced-cost meals. And their families are going to need food pantries more than ever to keep their children and their families fed over the summer. This Saturday is the Letter Carriers Food Drive. We ask everybody to leave food at their mailbox so that our letter carriers and our volunteers can pick up that food and help us keep food pantries full this summer. We have seen up to $25 million in cuts from the federal government for food support in the past few weeks. So local support is more important than ever to keep food pantries full and to keep our neighbors fed. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing May 15 through 21, 2025, as National Police Week. And for this, I'd like Councilmember Michael Branstadter to meet with Chief Patrick Smith to receive the proclamation. Oh, Chief Smith, there, there he is. And I believe, Chief, you've got a few officers. We'll be glad to have all of them come on up, and then we'll do a photo after the proclamation is issued. That'll be great.
It's my pleasure to read this proclamation for National Police Week. I would just preface by saying that this is a particularly important topic in Lakewood. Because as we just saw, 15 years ago, when I was first elected to the City Council along with the mayor and the deputy mayor, the the first significant event that took place even before we took office was when the Lakewood Police Department lost four officers to, to, to an assault upon them being able to go and do that. And that the aftermath of that was significantly showed the appreciation and the concern of the entire community around the police department and what they did. And that has continued to, to this present day. City of Lakewood Proclamation. Whereas each May during the weeks surrounding May 15, our nation salutes the American men and women who put their lives on the line every day to maintain public safety and hold accountable those who break the law. Whereas over the last three years, the COVID-19 pandemic placed first responders at additional risk, dramatically impacting how they interact with the public and presenting challenges never faced before. And whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the 99 dedicated members of the Lakewood Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 17,000 injuries. And whereas the first recorded death in 1786, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have been killed in the line of duty, including four members of the Lakewood Police Department in 2009. Whereas it is with heavy hearts we mourn the heroes taken from us only because they chose to serve. And we rededicate ourselves to carrying forward their noble legacy. Whereas the names of those dedicated public service are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council officially recognizes May 15 through May 21 as National Police Week in the city of Lakewood and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, as signed by the mayor and all members of the Lakewood City Council. And I guess that I would just append to this that although it occurs outside of the week that we're designating as Police Week, that the, that this Wednesday at 6:00 PM, there is the annual Pierce County Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony that is going to take place in University Place. And I certainly would also encourage any members of the community to be able to attend that and further show respect and honor to those who have served.
Chief? Always a pleasure to do that and you that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this proclamation. As part of the Police Unity, I'm sorry, as part of Police Week, which we've approached now, myself and three other officers are, are from Lakewood Police Department, including one survivor, will be riding in what we call the Police Unity Tour. The motto of the Police Unity Tour, "We ride for those who died." This will be my sixth time that I've rode. The ride will go basically from East Hanover, New Jersey. We leave this Wednesday, the 7th. We'll start riding on the 9th. We'll ride 300 miles approximately, and we'll end up at the National Law Enforcement Memorial Wall in Washington, DC. First day is about 50 miles, takes two days or 100 miles each, and then we end with about 50 miles. When we, throughout the course of the ride, it's probably one of the most amazing experiences because we see officers from all over the country, about 2,000 police officers. And some survivors ride with us, including officers in Great Britain and Israel come over. I was honored this last year to go ride in Israel with them as a return for their fallen officers and honoring them. When we do arrive in DC, there's literally just thousands of people on the streets that are waiting for us as we ride through, even before DC, the schools are let out along the way. It's very, very touching, and fire trucks, garrison plagues, all those kind of things throughout the course of the 300-mile ride. So it's a really big thing on the East Coast. I had not heard about it until I started riding after we lost R4. So I'll be riding again with our other officers to honor them and to honor others throughout the country to have given their life and the ultimate sacrifice. After we do arrive in DC, there will be a candlelight vigil on the following day, on May 12th. I'm sorry, to May 13th, and there's approximately about 20,000 people that will come in. For that, it's a national lawn, Capitol lawn there. And then there'll be the President of the United States, or Attorney General, or somebody will usually speak while we're there too. So thank you for your support. All of our donations that we have to raise have come large, about 95% from citizens and businesses of Lakewood. So we're very honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, anything else? They'll do the photograph then. Come on up. And next, but certainly not least, Councilmember Bokey will be joined by Weston Ad, our city engineer, to receive a proclamation recognizing May 18 through 24, 2025, as Public Works Week, which you can recognize by all the torn-up streets in the city of Lakewood.
Exactly. Thank you, Mayor Paul Bokey. I, we are justifiably proud in the city of Lakewood of our Public Works Department. Over the last dozen years or so, they've taken on literally hundreds of millions of dollars of projects and brought them home in a timely manner. Lot of citizen input. And, and you can see the improvements, right, that the, not just the motorized transportation, but the non-motorized transportation. It's easier to get around town. It's easier to get around, to walk around and get exercise and various things like that. There's also things you don't see because we're also responsible for the surface water management, and we've had to bring those up to standards because those standards keep changing. And it's something we don't think about, but water runoff becomes very important, becomes important to the water district, but it's also important to the state of Washington. And, and we do spend quite a bit of money on that. So today, it's my distinct pleasure to talk to the proclamation for Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, quality of life, and the overall well-being of all people. And whereas services like water delivery, sanitary sewers, storm drainage, solid waste collection, road design, and construction, and ongoing infrastructure maintenance and repair would not be possible without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of Lakewood residents greatly depends on these types of facilities and services to the community, the community is grateful for the dedication of the city's public works employees. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through May 24, 2025, as Public Works Week in the city of Lakewood, and do hereby recognize the contributions which public works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Proclaim this, the 5th day of May, 2025, Jason Whalen, Mayor, Mary Moss, Deputy Mayor, and the rest of the City Council. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
And there you go, in a few words, please.
Few words.
Thank you, Councilman Bokey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So again, thank you on behalf of the Planning and Public Works Department for recognizing National Public Works Week. We really appreciate council's support of both the department and the robust Capitol program that Councilman Bokey just mentioned. This year's APWA theme is People, Purpose, and Presence, which highlights the three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities every day. This year's poster is displayed in the back of the council chambers. And again, public works employees keep our community strong by providing infrastructure and services and transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater treatment. These types of projects are part of what makes our community a great places to, a great place to live. As was mentioned, it's the season of orange cones. The city is well underway on some construction projects. We're a good way through Silicon Boulevard. And that will be a great cornerstone project with that sidewalk and bike lane. In addition, we're on South Tacoma Way, the very last piece from North City Limits. The city, since incorporation, will have touched South Tacoma Way from Gravelly Lake Drive all the way to North City Limits after that project's done. In addition, in the next two weeks, we'll be overlaying South Tacoma Way from 96 up to Silicon, and there'll be a brand-new signal at 92nd and South Tacoma Way as soon as those poles arrive. So looking forward to that. But beyond just solely road projects, the city has a number of sewer projects. Currently, we're building sewer on Rose Road, Forest, and Fern and Tillicum. And in June, the city will be bidding sewer again for Wadsworth, Silcox Lane, and Boat Street. Many of our road projects also include water lines. So we have Nyanza that's going to bid here shortly from Gravelly Lake Drive to Gravelly Lake Drive. That's going to be a 6.5 million combined project of road and water line. We'll also be packaging three streets together. Interlock and Idlewild, 112th, that'll also have water line replacement. That alone's a $4.5 million package. So the city continues to deliver a very robust infrastructure program year in, year out. And we have many projects planned for the years to come. So again, I want to thank the council on behalf of the Planning and Public Works Department for recognizing National Public Works Week and for your continued support of our Capitol Program. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, great. Good evening for proclamations and celebration of good things happening. Next section of tonight's agenda is the public comment portion. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or via her email, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the City Council electronically. But for purposes of our transparent record, we asked the clerk to read the names of those who have submitted written comments in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance of the meeting from Christina Manetti.
Very good.
Very good. Please note, there is a public hearing tonight on the 2025 carry-forward budget adjustment. If you'd like to testify specific to that topic, please wait to do so under the public hearings and appeals portion of tonight's agenda. Members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole, and not with regard to any individual council member, so that we can maintain a robust, constructive public comment session. Virtual comments are also authorized. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, you can join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782, and enter the meeting ID number Once in the room, please use the raise the hand feature so we can recognize and call on you to provide public comment. Again, we just ask you, state your name, residence, a record, and we'll give you your three minutes. So, I will first call on those who are here in person. And the first folks I have on the public comment sign-in sheet, Julius Brown.
Demandful accountability with the Lakewood Police Leadership. Good evening, first of all. My name is Julius Brown. I'm a veteran. I'm the original chairman of the Lakewood African-American Police Advisory Committee. I'm a member of the PC FIT, and a member of the Public Safety Committee. And we spent hours working to improve relationships between officers and community in the inception of this police department, to make sure that officers of this city did not have a bias, and the ones that did were reeded out. I think our silence over the year has made people think that we went away. I come before you today not out of anger, but out of deep concern and responsibility. I'm here to speak truth to power and to make one thing absolutely clear. We cannot, must not allow officers to make racial and inappropriate sexual jokes on the job to return to positions of leadership in the Lakewood Police Department. What kind of example does that set for the citizens of Lakewood? Citizens who look like me, who raise families here, who pay taxes, and who deserve to be protected, not mocked. What message are we sending to young black and brown children in the city when we say this behavior is forgivable? This conduct is fit for leadership? What message are we sending to their subordinates? Let's be honest, these aren't jokes, these are signals, they are warnings, they are evidence of a mindset that sees some communities, communities as less than others. And history has shown us painfully, repeatedly, that when the mindset is tolerated, the consequences are deadly. And when the line is finally crossed, and one of these individuals acts on a bias they've joked about, who pays the price? We do. We, the people, we, the taxpayers, we, the families who bear the emotional, legal, and financial burden of the lawsuits the city must settle because someone in a uniform couldn't keep their prejudice off the clock, or the badge. So, I say this now, and I say it plainly. We should cut our ties with individuals who think that these offices, before the inevitable happens. Accountability isn't vengeance, it's about prevention, it's about public trust, it's about making sure the leadership of our police department reflects the values we claim to stand for. Larry Saunders, God rest his soul, would not have put up with this, and neither should we. Lakewood deserves better, our children deserve better, and we demand better, today, not tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the sign-in sheet, Jackie Jones Hook.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Jones Hook with the Buffalo Soldiers Museum. Also here is Carissa Birch, our event planner, and we have board member Billy Ebert, he is a Lakewood resident. So, first of all, Mayor Wayland and Deputy Mayor Moss, we want to say thank you to those of you who have served. We represent our military community, and we share, Buffalo Soldiers Museum and the council share in honoring and supporting our military, who have taken the oath to protect, defend, and serve. And so certainly now, in 2025, now more than ever, our community needs us. We are community builders. So, we each year offer a free event for military families to bring, it's Family Day, for the military and all families to come and enjoy a free event. The theme is honoring our military labor force, past, present, and future. And we will be hosting this event on Labor Day. It's a federal holiday, everyone is off, it's a time again for families to come and to bond, and to make that connection. It will be held at Cheney Stadium, and we are able to provide the event free for our military community and for the Pierce County community, free of charge through sponsorships. In that, we do have a letter here for you, a package that we will share, our support letter, also our partnership with Cheney Stadium, the flyer, as well as a letter from council on America's military history paths.
We want to thank you again for the past two years of your support for this incredible event. Last year, we were able to add free back-to-school haircuts for all the kids in attendance, and it was a really wonderful thing. We've, we've really embraced how this event has created a lot of connections for all of us to kind of build the gaps between, or, sorry, bridge the gaps between our different communities, especially the ones surrounding our strong military base. This event has become a big family tradition, and through support, we're able to not only do two softball games at Cheney Stadium, the main event is the Army versus Air Force, but also this Family Fun Day, which is full of games, activities, and video game trucks, food trucks, and local businesses as vendors.
Thank you very much.
And we hope you come this year, too.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last individual that actually signed in on the physical sign-in sheet, but let that not hold you back. If you'd like to provide public comment, please feel free to queue up at the mic, and you'll have your three minutes of opportunity. Okay, seeing, yes, ma'am, you're welcome to, come on up.
Hello. Hi, my name is Alice Fong, and I am the current chair for the Pierce County Commission on Refugee and Immigrant Affairs, and I, of course, am a resident here in Lakewood and represent Lakewood's district to the council. And so, I just wanted to say hello and invite you to any of our meetings, and learn more about what we're doing with the, with our commission. And we definitely are not only serving our constituents of refugees and immigrants, and then it's really our mission and vision is to serve the whole community and ensure that we come together. And so, we are putting together our work plan to do something like that, and would love to have more partnership and relationship with all the city level, too, in that. So, hope to connect with you all on that. But thank you very much for your service.
Well, thank you. And if you do have events that come up during the calendar year, if you can get those to Ms. Schumacher, or the city clerk, she can get them on the council calendar, to make sure that they're in front of us.
Okay, perfect.
That would be great. Thank you.
Because I also serve on the Lakewood Promise Advisory Board, too.
There, well, you know how to find her, then. That's great. Anyone else like to provide public comment here in the audience? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and turn to those friends and neighbors who are appearing virtually. We'll see if we have any virtual hands raised. We have two. The first appears to be Christina Manetti.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, great. Good evening, everybody. I have two comments. The first is from me personally. I'm Christina Manetti, I live in Lakewood. In light of your proclamation tonight about Water Week, I would like to ask that the city of Lakewood, from now on, work harder to put into practice what it has professed in its proclamation. You said, "Whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, and whereas the residents of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution," et cetera. I would like to remind you that of several situations in Lakewood and our watershed where the city of Lakewood, in its own actions, has not lived up to these statements. Although the city calls upon its residents to protect our source waters from pollution, the city has paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to dump pollutants into its own Wahab Lake, rather than take more holistic and environmentally sound action to solve the algae problem. The former head of Public Works once called our Salmonberry and Clover Creek "a drainage ditch," and those are, it's a direct quote, "and the city has, other than some restoration work in Springbrook Park, I think, shown little interest in truly restoring this water body and this salmon habitat it should represent. For example, by allowing major development in the shape of a large apartment complex to be constructed immediately adjacent to the riparian area. Elsewhere, the city located a dog park, complete with feces, next towards lake, and expanded cement surfaces there for pump tracks. It also allowed the installation of new toxic baseball fields made of crumb rubber that leach into our water table, and allow the continued leaching of creosote," which is highly carcinogenic, of course, "into highest priority fish habitat from the approximately 70-year-old creosote posts that hold up Lake Silicon Bridge. As one more final example, the city has allowed, without proper environmental review, the construction of a very large apartment complex on the former Barnes and Noble site over the headwaters of another of our Salmonberry Creek's Ponce de Leon. Yes, educate the public, but lead by your example. Your proclamation this evening rings hollow when we juxtapose it with your many instances of abuse and degradation of our sole source aquifer and the many water bodies of the city, many of which are habitat for endangered salmon. The salmon need all the help we can give them, but as a keystone species, by saving the salmon and the water bodies they call home, we are also saving ourselves. Thank you for your renewed resolve in your efforts to truly restore and protect Lakewood's water in all of its forms." And here is my second comment. Christina Manetti, the Gary Oak Coalition, the Gary Oak Coalition requests that the city make Gary Oak education a priority in its new urban forestry program. Many people do not know what a Gary Oak is here. One such example is a property owner with whom I was talking about removing a huge amount of ivy with extremely thick vines from his Gary Oak. He uses the property as a rental and lives in a small town in rural King County. He had never heard of a Gary Oak. He had no idea that the tree in front of his house was in any way special. In fact, the city itself doesn't seem to realize that it's oak so special either. Otherwise, they would have dismissed the idea of making a small traffic calming roundabout on a side road that required the cutting down of an oak that was between 350 and 400 years old. It's not just Lakewood, though. Let's take as a warning the recent cutting down of a five-trunked Gary Oak at the Meadow Park Golf Course, the largest of whose stumps measured 30 inches across. If at breast height, this would have meant that the oak was between 450 and 600 years old. Even the lower estimate, though, would be an amazing age. It would have started life in 1575, just about 200 years before the United States was even a country. In England, Queen Elizabeth I was on the throne, and Shakespeare hadn't even written the first of his plays yet. He would write Romeo and Juliet only some 20 years later. All of the five trunks were healthy, no rot anywhere. The head of the golf course office told me that one branch had broken and had to be removed, and that leaving the oak there was, quote, "just too much of a risk because it was near a dirt overflow parking lot," and, quote, "the area where we clean our carts." Now, this was Tacoma, but I wouldn't put it past Lakewood either. Really? Couldn't they have just trimmed the branch that broke? Did they have to cut down the five centuries of life? With much more life left in that oak, for sure. This is the kind of tragic story that we want to avoid in Lakewood, which has seen more than 500 oak lives end in tragedy in recent years. Through its urban forestry program, as per code requirements in 14154030A, the city of Lakewood needs to help cultivate a sense of awe and respect, and hopefully even reverence for these oaks in the people of Lakewood if they are to be protected. The Gary Oaks are valuable as a keystone species, but also culturally as artifacts of the native past here. For these oaks, we see, were cultivated for thousands of years. Well, not those specific ones, but the oaks here are evidence of this cultivation. By allowing the destruction of these oaks, which are living monuments to native people's stewardship of the land, you are dishonoring the memory of these people who lived here before us, and that of their descendants today. Please contact us about developing an effective program of public outreach and education for the people of Lakewood, so that they can understand what a special tree we have here, and its habitat, and why we all, including the city itself, need to protect them. We look forward to your email or call. Thanks a lot for your time.
Next is James Dunlop.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is James Dunlop, I'm a Lakewood resident. So, today, you're celebrating Lakewood's police officers, and I'm just concerned that, looking at what's been happening in Lakewood over the last 10 years and more, that there doesn't seem to be any real awareness of, you know, perhaps problems of the culture in Lakewood Police. You know, for example, I mean, obviously, the most notorious example was the killing of Leonard Thomas, and I know I've gone on about it, but I think it's really important that Leonard Thomas, holding a child, was killed by three, well, by, by, well, certainly the marksman was, I believe, at the time, was on Lakewood Police Force, and there was a civil suit, and those three, those three officers were given, really, a very, they had to pay, well, they were supposed to pay, you know, seven-figure damages, yet Lakewood didn't seem to accept that there was a problem. They did their best until the very end to, you know, try to, you know, try to, you know, suggest that it wasn't their fault, and they remained on the fourth. And so, there doesn't seem to be any sense that there might be a problem. And, you know, likewise, you know, we have with, you know, with the killing of Said Joakim, you know, which was happened five years ago last week, and, again, eight million, eight, there was an out-of-court settlement of $8 million, and the city doesn't seem to care, they almost seem to think, well, it's just some administrative issue, and it really isn't a problem. And I just think that there must be, and of course, we've had a 2024, we've had this 2024 case, which was recently reported in the Tacoma News Tribune, about, you know, officers being suspended. I'm not going to go into detail about that, I mean, others know more about it than me. But I suspect there is a problem with the culture in Lakewood Police that has been going on for some time. And, you know, I remember in 2018, I was, I just picked up my son from school at Hattloff, and I saw this police car in front of me, and I noticed in the back of this police car, and it was 2018, and it said, it had that one, that sort of Starbucks imitation Starbucks guns and coffee thing. Okay, people like to have that guns and coffee, because they're into guns, but for a police car to have that, and I remember I write, writing to Mike Zarro, asking if that's such a good message to be giving. And, okay, that was 2018, that's seven years ago, but I'm wondering if that culture still exists, and the fact that the city has not confronted it, and doesn't seem to accept any blame, any responsibility, seems to give the police force a free pass. Maybe something is still rotten in the city of Lakewood that hasn't been fully recognized.
That is the last hand I see raised to provide virtual public comment. We'll take a moment, Madam Clerk, just to make sure. Any others?
They're virtual.
Okay, very well, I'll declare the public comment period closed. Now, turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of April 21, 2025. B, approval of police vouchers in the amount of $4,154,797.77 for the period of March 15, 2025 through April 15, 2025. C, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $3,501,639.29 for the period of March 16, 2025 through April 15, 2025. D, motion number 2025-20, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with KBH Construction for the Park Sign Project. E, motion number 2025-21, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with KBH Construction for the Park Sign Project. to the agreement with Robert W. Droll Landscape Architects for design and support services for the American Lake Park Access Improvement Project. F, motion number 2025-22, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Redside Construction in the amount of $701,366 for the Ward's Lake Park Improvement Project. G, motion number 2025-23, adopting the 2024 Transportation Benefit District Annual Report. H, motion number 2025-24, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with DP Excavation in the amount of $43,599.60 for the demolition of dangerous and nuisance structures at 9320 through 9330 Bridgeport Way Southwest.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss. So we adopt the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. First up, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2025 carry-forward budget adjustment.
Thank you very much. And for a brief overview, I'll call on our deputy city manager, Ms. Taw Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. This is the carry-forward budget adjustment public hearing. This was brought to the city council at a study session previously. And it's been posted on our website and has been there for some time. So I wanted to bring your attention, first of all, that the background on this is really just to adjust the ending balances to reflect the 2024, adjust the beginning balances for 2025 based on the 2024 closing. And included in this request is adjustments to incorporate items that the city council previously approved, appropriate funds, projects funded by grants and contributions. It's carry-forward of capital projects. And then there's some new allocations as well. So on the first page of the packet, on page 155, there have been two items that were added since it was presented to the city council on April 21 study session. The first one is the Swim Fund, $200,000 for the Lakewood Municipal Code Title 12 update. This is funded by the Swim Fund. And this is to update the engineering standards and related regulations in the Lakewood Municipal Code Title 12. And the purpose of it is to improve the functionality, efficiency, and compliance with city engineering and development standards. And these updates will promote efficiency and workplace or workflow optimization, enhance customer service and streamlining requirements, and standardizing the permit procedures on engineering improvements. This is one of several process improvements that our Public Works and Planning and Public Works has on their work plan for 2025. The second item is in the Park CIP Fund. It's $80,000 for Motor Avenue site improvements. This includes adding irrigation zones to cover the full 1.5-acre turf. The project includes improving the property purchased adjacent to Motor Avenue for the downtown park. The building on the parcel was removed. The improvements will up, regrade the site to remove rocks and eliminate any significant or immediate drops of dips that could create safety issues irrigate extent of the site and add some topsoil, import and install four-inch topsoil to cover that 1.5 acres. So those are the new items. The items that were previously reviewed with the city council is in detail, starting on, I should stop and say that these adjustments are in accordance with the city council's policies in maintaining the 12% ending fund balance reserves at the end of 2026. The details start on page 158 on each of these adjustments. But if you want to take a closer look at just a summary, that starts on page 185. So other than those two changes, there hasn't been any other proposed adjustments added. So that's, that's what I have.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? I just had a quick question. You may not know the answer to it, but for the new item that popped up with regard to the additional 80 for the Motor Avenue site improvements, any idea whether or not the grading that would be consistent with what we're discussing here was or could have been part of the original scope of work that we paid for?
Let's see. Planning and Public Works Director Jeffrey Mac is here, and he can answer that question.
Great.
The, the original, when we looked at it, we could have done that, but we were looking at the abatement at the time. When the soils that were discovered that were underneath it tended to be unfavorable for continued growth. So when we looked at that, there'd be the need to go ahead and put down base slope or base material to have a truly active growth. So it's kind of discovered when we were doing the abatement.
And the base material is the four inches of topsoil we're talking about here in this additional item. Okay. All right, Mr. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask about the, the other new item, this $200,000 to update the municipal code. Is it $200,000 worth of just the paperwork to get it cleaned up? Or is there additional stuff that needs to be purchased? Or what goes with that?
It is actually an update of the new manual. It's actually a quantification also and an audit against the State Department of Ecology's Stormwater Western Washington Manual to ensure that we're in alignment, as well as an update of the code and all the work associated with that. The last time we did the update, it was done in-house. And so this will be a more holistic look with improvements for efficiency and clarity.
So this is done not in-house, but with a contractor to help us? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Kraus or Mr. Remack, since we have him? Thank you, Ms. Kraus. This is the date set for the public hearing on the 2025 carry-forward budget adjustment. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. As indicated previously, comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, 6000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or via email at b@schumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting will have been provided at the council electronically, but for purposes of our record during this public hearing, I ask that the clerk read the names of those who have submitted testimony in advance, if any.
No testimony in advance of this evening's public hearing.
Thank you. As with the public comment section of the agenda, testimony is limited to three minutes per person. We simply ask that you appear to the podium or virtually when we call you, state your name and residence for the record, and you'll have your three minutes. Virtual testimony is authorized. If you'd like to provide live virtual testimony, again, join the Zoom meeting by calling the number 253-215-8782. Enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. Please use the raise the hand feature, and you will be called upon accordingly. So I'll first call on those who have signed in to speak during the public hearing, if any. I don't have any on the sheet, but again, don't be bashful. If you are here to present testimony during the public hearing on the 2025 carry-forward budget adjustment, now is your opportunity. Seeing none in person, do we have any virtually, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Ms. Kraus must have been incredibly convincing. So I will declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to ordinances. The first ordinance, number 828. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 828, amending ordinance number 766 to extend the date within which the city's designated representative can finalize the terms of the city's limited tax general obligation bonds.
Very good. And for this, I'll again call in Ms. Kraus to provide us with a brief overview before calling for a motion on this ordinance.
So this ordinance, the city council had passed back in December of 2021. And we have the capital projects aligned where we will issue bonds based on the cash flows. And in order to do that, we needed to extend the issuance of the bonds. So originally, the bonds were to be issued by 12/31/2024. We don't have a need to bring those additional bond proceeds in. We did not change the terms of the bonds, just extending the date at which the bonds would be issued. So the bond's maturity will still stay at December 1, 2044. And we'll just keep an eye on the cash flows and issue it accordingly. And that's what this ordinance does.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? Again, this is a matter we did review during a study session. So we're somewhat familiar with it, with Ms. Kraus's work and that of her team. So in the absence of any further questions, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 828?
Move adoption of ordinance 828.
Second, Mayor.
Been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, seconded by Councilmember Bell, that we adopt ordinance 828. Any further discussion? Mr. Bokey, did you have some items for discussion?
Just laps. I didn't even see.
Very nice. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 828, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We now turn to ordinance number 829. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 829 relating to the approval of projects to be funded with revenue generated by the city of Lakewood's Transportation Benefit District.
And again, we have Ms. Kraus, our deputy city manager, for an overview on this. It also is on page 197 of our packet.
So this item here, the purpose of it is to really update the projects that can be funded with the Transportation Benefit District. And so given that the remaining Transportation Benefit District life is through December 1, 2044, that coincides with the issuance of the debt. So really, we just updated it, housekeeping in nature, to show the projects that were completed. And the remaining projects have Transportation Benefit District eligible funds, but the bond ordinance really has earmarked which projects could be funded. So by beginning in '25 this year, there really isn't any other funds to provide funding for projects. So this really just keeps it as eligible projects, but the funds have already been earmarked for debt service payments. So this is really housekeeping in nature.
So just by way of clarification, on page 198 of the packet, where it states, "The updated list of projects funded with revenue generated by the TBD", that's the listing started with 100th Lakeview to South Tacoma Way. Those have been funded or will be funded by the TBD funds. Some of them are yet to be completed, obviously, or started.
Yes. So the first project, Lakeview to South Tacoma, that has some TBD funds, whether it be the bond funds or the, before city council earmarked the funds for bonds. So it would have just been the pay-as-you-go Transportation Benefit District. The next projects, between the new LED streetlights and the chip seal program, these are projects that have been receiving or eligible to receive TBD funds. And so we're keeping those on. So if there is any type of flexibility, if projects, you know, come in under, we could still use those bonds to fund these, if there's anything that is left over.
Okay.
So we don't want to remove them all entirely. And then there is also the overlay project. But really, the projects that will be receiving the in 2025 through 2026 is really the Mount Tahoma Drive, Interlocken to Whitman, the Nyanza Road Project, and Interlocken from 112th to Washington Boulevard. Those are the ones that are slated to get bond proceeds.
Because those have been identified with council manic bonds, and those have been obligated.
Yes. And the city council identified these back in December 2021 when we did the whole financing plan.
Right. Okay. Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. Kraus, Nyanza, is that going to be fully funded by TBD? Or did it didn't grant at all?
There's other funding sources. Let me just get to, it's going to be a combination. Typically, the, it's not fully funded by the TBD dollars. There's other sources as well, whether it be REIT or some general fund or, yeah.
Because the TBD also serves for debt service for those council manic bonds, right?
Yeah, once the bonds are issued, the remaining, so in 2025 and 2026, we'll issue bonds. And so the pro, the revenues that come into the TBD, they're all earmarked for debt service payments. So there will really be nothing left unless we get like a ton of, you know, TBD revenue coming in. So.
That depends on how many cars, new cars, Mr. Bokey's going to purchase this year.
Correct, correct. That is correct. And, and, and I do want to, and I do want to point that out, that the TBD monies are locally generated funds. These are strictly, I mean, we talk a lot about getting grant dollars. We get federal dollars. We get state dollars. We've put at times money from other sources within like the general fund. But the TBD dollars, Transportation Benefit District, which is created by this council per state law, $20 per licensed vehicle in the city of Lakewood. So this is truly a locally generated tax for local road improvements. And this is the list of things that we've either completed or are on our way to completing. And it's, it's an important, so I wanted to call attention to that, that this is something that actually taxpayers in Lakewood are paying full, full freight for. And, and two, that it really is a key piece of trying to keep our roads, not only improving our roads, but also when you talk about signal projects, minor capital projects, neighborhood safety improvements, new streetlights, and, and, and the chip seal program, which is vital to the long-term maintenance of the roads. That, that, those are all things that come from the TBD.
Yes, that is correct. It is all locally generated. A lot of these projects have a different source, including the $20 TBD. So, yeah, so they'll have a mix of grants as well as contributions from other funds, such as the Swim Fund. But it is all locally generated for the purpose of, you know, either expanding or improving projects or maintaining projects or maintaining road conditions.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would note that this list and this approval of what we can do and apply TBD funds towards, that there is, the list is significant. Most of the items on the list are not 100% funded with the TBD, but they are funded with a combination of other things. And earlier this evening, as, as Mr. Ott spoke to us about the robust public works projects that we, that we have, it's significant to note the projects that aren't on this list, that, that, that we have projects that, that, that we've obtained funding for in 100% to do that. But that what the TBD dollars are allowing us to do is to do those projects that fall within the things that the community finds important to do, such as that Spine Corps of Hipkins and Interlocken and, and, and other things. To be able to, to do that, that, quite honestly, the large funding sources in the sky that do the Silicon Boulevards and South Tacoma Way and, 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 and items, wouldn't ever do it. But that they're, they're, they're key ways where we can take some money and actually do things for the people that live here that make things, things better for them. And so that's the, one, one of the advantages of this TBD funding, to be able to go and do that. And I think that, you know, this is a, a a matter that, that in future years, this council will need to look at making sure that, that, that the TBD with its history of success is, continues, because there is a time of when it, when it might sunset and that, and that, and that, and that we need to pay attention to that and recognize the history of all the things that were accomplished. You know, we're, this, this ordinance here is taking things off the list because they were done, because they're completed. And we've done that before. It's going on. And when we get to the point where we are going to need to remind ourselves and remind the community of the history of TBD funding and, and the difference that it has made in Lakewood in terms of being able to go and do that. It's one of those things that isn't looking to serve the future population. It's the projects that are on this list of things that'll serve well the people who live here now.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of Ms. Kraus? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. And do you recall the sunset date of the existing TBD?
December first, 2044, and that is our last debt service payment.
Great. I knew it coincided somewhere for the initial council manic bonds. Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, in the absence of any further questions of Ms. Kraus, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance eight two nine?
Move adoption of ordinance eight two nine.
I will second that. Thank you very much. It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt ordinance eight two nine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance eight two nine has been adopted. We now move to resolutions, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero six, adopting the five-year, 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2025 Annual Action Plan.
And for this, we have our Planning Manager, Mr. Jeff Gum.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. As the clerk read, the resolution before you tonight is the approval of the five-year Consolidated Plan, fiscal years 2025 through 2029, as well as the annual action plan for 2025. Both the five-year consolidated plan and the annual action plan are in your agenda packets. Both were reviewed by council on March seventeenth. The approval of these is the culmination of a, a long process, a, a large amount of citizen input was, was sought. Staff took the plans to advisory boards, took them to the public. There was two public hearings. The very last was held here at city council on April twenty-first. The agenda packet does include all of the council comments received, so council can review those. The five-year plan does include goals and outcomes and funding specifically targeting five-year funding cycle for CDBG and home. Within that five-year Consolidated Plan are going to be five annual action plans, the first of which would be fiscal year 2025. The fiscal year 2025 Annual Action Plan includes both CDBG and home funding allocations. Those are anticipated right now. While Congress has passed a continuing resolution, it's kind of a blueprint or a framework. HUD has not yet received final allocation, so we're anticipating an allocation of CDBG of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That allocation is included in your agenda packet in table one on page two oh seven. The allocations, again, they include five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in proposed CDBG funding. It includes one hundred thousand dollars in anticipated income from the major home repair program and includes NSP program abatement, anticipated income of two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, as well as reprogramming of seventy-one thousand, ninety-three dollars and forty-five cents in previous years' unexpended funds. The 2025 Annual Action Plan also includes funding for home in table two on page two oh eight of your agenda packet. The home allocation again is anticipated at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for 2025. The allocation includes one hundred thousand dollars in program income to be allocated to the Affordable Housing Fund and a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars to be allocated to tenant-based rental assistance. So two hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars in program income is anticipated for the home program. The, the one thing that, that staff is recommending would be a pro-rata basis for allocation, should the allocation changes between what we're anticipating and when the funds are actually programmed in at HUD. Recent conversation with our HUD rep believes that we're looking for about another week, maybe a week and a half, before they get those funds allocated and those numbers back to the jurisdictions. I think our numbers will be relatively close, depending on, on how many jurisdictions that, that are entitlement cities and so forth. There's a few more, so we anticipate the numbers will be a little bit lower, but I think our numbers are, are good. Should they, should they vary, that would be the recommendation to staff to do a, a pro-rata basis. HUD has anticipated that should allocations be delayed, June twenty-fourth is another deadline that HUD has kind of extended. So typically, these are, are presented to HUD on May fifteenth. Should allocations take a while, which they may, they've also extended a, a June twenty-fourth deadline to, to submit the final plan to HUD. So there's kind of a contingency plan there in case those take a while. With that, I turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Gum? Mr. Bokey?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gum. And, and I've read this, and I think I know the difference, but I, I want you to help navigate these definitions for me. And I apologize because you're just standing there and I'm getting to read the report. So on page two oh five, Emergency Assistance Payments Program, forty-five thousand dollars. Funding provides for the provision of emergency assistance payments for basic services such as food, clothing, or housing-related expenses to low-income households, especially for those elderly, disabled, and minority households continuing to be disproportionately impacted. And that goes on to say, and then it lists, and it lists different things like utility expenses, screening fees, various things like that to get people into housing. So I may be answering my own question. So then the next section is Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, one hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five. And this funds would provide for a one-time security not to exceed two months' rent and utility deposit-only program for low- and moderate-income households. Assistance would be provided as a standalone program and funding will not be used in conjunction with any household already receiving rental assistance such as Section Eight or Housing Joyce vouchers. So can you be both in the Emergency Assistance Payments Program and the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program? Are they two separate programs or are we, are you looking at two separate audiences?
I'm looking at two separate audiences. So the, the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program would be home-funded. And it would be specifically looking to fund just initial deposits and so forth, and it would be a one-time thing. So if someone needs their first month's rent or whatever to get in.
Who is the typical person for that?
Typical person for, for a tenant-based rental assistance would be, say, a, a, a middle-range household income, someone who's making, say, fifty percent of area median income between fifty and eighty, someone who can afford to get into a, an apartment or so forth, and then be able to afford the ongoing rent. They just need that kind of initial help to get into their, into the rental unit. Somebody who would be in the emergency program would probably be somebody at a, at least historically, we've done this for a couple of years, somebody that at a lower income level. So they're typically in the thirty to fifty percent. They're having a hard time making some payments, so their utilities have gotten behind or their phone has been shut off and they need some assistance to get that put back in. They're, they've got sewers, utilities that are, that are being leaned and so forth. So it's, it's kind of a different clientele that we're looking to assist.
So what kind of demands for both those programs? How did you come up with the dollar amounts?
The emergency program is just based on historical use over the last couple of years. We've, the first year we allocated ninety thousand dollars as a city, the second year we allocated eighty-five. We have approximately sixty-five thousand dollars left of those two years funding, and forty-five would kind of get us through the following year, based on what I've seen over the first two years. It's, it's, it's in the fifty-five thousand dollar range to sixty thousand dollars that we're spending on average. So that would be consistent for 2025 to get us through into 2026. The, the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance is just based on what we did in twenty, I think it was 2020. We had CARES Act funds. And so the city instituted a Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, and it was a fairly similar one. We were just paying back due rent to try and clear out some issues for tenants to allow them to stay rather than be evicted. And we ended up helping, I'm trying to remember the number, a hundred and forty-eight households. It was a large number of households that we assisted. So based on kind of just having a new, one, it's a new program that we would have to develop. So it, it'll take us a little while to get it instituted, being able to kind of put the, put the wheels in place to get it, get it going and, and have somebody do this for us. We're, we're anticipating that it would be a nonprofit organization rather than city staff doing it. And just being able to get that up and running, looking at what we did in the past, how many clients that we assisted. I think it's a reasonable number in a, in a first year to, to try and, and figure out if it's a program that we want to do. It's, it's also a number that's not too large or too small. Try and figure out if, if we can make this program work. If it doesn't work, it's a, it's something that there's not a lot of money invested in. It can be easily reallocated to another program. And if it's, if it's highly successful, we can look at it and say, hey, you know, we allocated a hundred and five thousand dollars to it, and we were able to assist, in, in this instance, sixty or ninety households that we're looking at, and then maybe something we want to continue. So just to kind of give a primer to council and, and kind of see where we're going.
How do these people come to your attention?
Sometimes I wonder. I, I think, I, I think I've gotten my, my cellphone out into a, a tree of, of people who just keep forwarding on and forwarding on and forwarding on. A lot of it is, it's, it's that. It's references from people that we've helped in the past, and they know their, their sister, brother, cousin. We, we get a lot of referrals that way. We have pretty good connections in with the Veterans Affairs. The, the individual who works at Pierce County has contacted us and, and sent us numerous clients that need assistance, Lakewood Area Shelters, the, the Housing Authorities. There's, there's a lot of, of organizations that have forwarded people on to us that they can't help for one reason or another.
Do you get any from the school district?
We used to. I haven't, I haven't had any from the school district for probably two or three years now.
Thank you. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Mr. Gum. I, I, I would say that over the cycles of five-year plans that I've been, been witness the city going through, that one of the things that has been positive is that we've been careful not to become the a sister of first, a sister of first choice, but that we, you and your, 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 your folks have done a good job of getting people to places of where the assistance that they need is already available and funded. And then thus being able to focus the city's resources residents that we have that really have few alternatives, okay? And, and that we're, we're able to go and do that. And, but, you know, and, and you know, you mentioned in your remarks that it's a low-income elderly residents for which we have a lot a greater percentage than, than, than most communities do within their population. So I think your programs have been going pretty well. I had one question that I just wanted to ask, because within the last five-year cycle, we had a situation where one of the other community organizations that was assisting folks in Lakewood, and I think it was the Metropolitan Development Council, made some administrative things, and suddenly they had made commitments to a number of households in Lakewood to, to, to do some of the assistance with rental-based assistance in that then they were had to back out. And, 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 you know, and we were able to, to, to look to step in, to, to be, to be able to go to those things. And I think that they then in another funding cycle got things together. But are there any other sources of assistance that we have folks that are lending on that are tentative, that, that we might see that, that occur again and have to, with our flexibility, step in to keep people from being on the street?
It's a good, good, good thought. I, none that I'm aware of. Yeah, Metropolitan Development Council was the one that we helped last, last year. We used SHB fourteen oh six funds. I think it was about seventy-five thousand dollars to assist seven households. The, the hard thing with the uncertainty with the economic conditions that we have right now and kind of where we're, where we're going into the future, it's, it's something that, that may happen again. And I, I think that we're in a good position to help an organization should they come forward. Again, I'm, I'm not aware of any right now.
Okay, well, you know, I, 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 I appreciate the, the work that's gone into both the five-year plan as well as the, the one-year plan and, and the, the ongoing efforts that, 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 that you and, 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 and your folks do every year to update it and, and apply the flexibility that we have to do real good for people, real people. Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Gum? Well, thank you for your work on that. Let's hope the funding is sustained despite the vagaries of funding issues these days. So do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six?
No move. Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Councilmember Laura Sella, that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adoption, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six has been adopted. We now move to resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven. Madam Clerk.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, pending 2025 B schedule.
Thank you. And for this, we have our Planning and Public Works Director, Mr. Jeff Remack.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council. Tonight before you is a resolution with proposed revisions to the city's 2025 fee schedule to address planning and public works permit fees. Updates aim to clarify and correct errors due to the 2025 fee schedule reformatting that we did, ensure cost recovery for permit intake, review, and inspection services, and implement a predictable flat rate structure for site development and land clearing activities. In 2024, city council approved the resolution establishing the city's fees. Since that time, as we moved through, we went ahead and discovered that there were some fees that were omitted, and this is an action to take correction on those. I'll speak to the housekeeping and error corrections first. Adjustments mainly focused on clarifications or reinstating accidentally deleted or omitted rates. Some fees removed due to redundancy. Example would be like massage business license is now a general business license, so we don't need to have that anymore. Certain fees were added back to the schedule to reflect requirements from city codes. Example would be design review, zoning certification, and temporary unit. They exist in the code. We need to have them on the schedule. Some corrections fix Scrivener errors like a missing digit on the street opening fee. It said incorrect price. And then language clarifications to ensure that customers understand fee applicability, such as the hearing examiner deposit requirements and administrative base fees. The substantive fee changes that we're looking at is a technology fee moving from two percent to four percent. That is to cover the cost of the software to support permit review and issuance within the City of Lakewood. Benchmark for those jurisdictions is anywhere between two to five percent, so we're still below the most cap of what most people are looking at. Site development fees are changing from evaluation-based pricing that had about five different prices to a flat rate fee when we're looking at it. So if you're doing a grading permit that's under five hundred cubic yards, it'll be a flat fee. If you're doing residential, it's a flat fee, and if it's commercial, flat fee. Makes it very predictable when people come in versus what the cost of your grading activities would have been, which was the previous methodology. Short-term vacation rental permit has been added as a new fee category, as we know we took short-term vacation rentals on in this last go-round. And then minor and major modification for type one through three permits. That was not something that we had previously, but there are permits that come in that sometimes go to make a modification to their proposal that are deemed minor and shouldn't have to go all the way back to the hearing examiner when we look at that. So we gave a definition in the code for that, and this addresses that. The alternatives to moving forward with approval to Uh, the alternatives to moving forward with approval today would be that we could, one, adopt a proposed revision, adopt modified revisions to the fees, or not adopt the resolution at all. Fiscal impact without the fee adjustments, it will impact fund revenues and the ability to service permit review as well as inspections. And that would put us in a position where there would be some general fund support. The idea is to not be supporting, uh, development within the city with anything other than revenue from the permit fees themselves. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Remack? Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Remack, one of the new categories of fees had to do with short-term vacation rentals. How does that differ from? It seems to be a subset of short-term rentals. Why are we focusing on rentals that are done for purposes of vacations as opposed to other reasons why a, a short-term rental might take place such as someone is buying a home, but they're waiting for it to close and they need a place to stay for six or eight weeks, or it's a military family that has come into the area and needs for uh, a, a, a short period of time before quarters become available to them on, on the installation. Why are we singling out only if the people are renting it for the purposes of a vacation as opposed to making, having a short-term rental for another reason?
Certainly. When, when the short-term vacation rental came into code, there was an actual application process that goes with that, with it involves staff review internally versus just the inspection like we would do normally for safety purposes. Um, so there's land use associated with it as well as conditions of the permit that need to be issued. So this actually covers the processing of that time. That's not something we necessarily do when it comes to the regular rental safety inspection when we go out. It's a business opportunity for short-term rental versus rental for long-term lease for a home.
Yeah, but what about the, I mean, what I'm asking about is what about the, the other short-term rentals that are not for a person of vacation is theirs? But could someone structure their business to target a non-vacation audience?
So the, the short-term rental doesn't really differentiate between vacation or whether you're renting it for business or interim for military housing. It's for-profit rental when we look at it for like Airbnb, VRBO, and that is the focus of what that short-term rental. They could put whatever title or whatever purpose for why they're doing that, but it's still the same business, so it still applies to the short-term rental.
So why do we insert the, the term vacation instead of just saying short-term rental?
Because that's what the code says.
Yep.
When we passed and inserted the short-term vacation rental into the code, it says short-term vacation rental. It does speak to the purpose of what is being used for. So this covers the, what you're looking at, Councilmember.
Okay. And, and it shows, so there, there, there aren't short-term rentals that are going to if I haven't understand that, but it's evade the fee the way you're, you, you, you envision it working?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Remack. Very much appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, amending the twenty-five fee schedule? Uh, so moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Laura Sella, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt Resolution twenty-five dash zero seven. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adoption, signified by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The resolution has been adopted. We turn to final resolution of the evening, twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, approving health on commons apartment forty unit multifamily tax exemption.
Thank you. And delete us through this matter, which starts at page four sixteen of our packet. We have our Public Works Director, Mr. Jeff Remack.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Before you is the Resolution twenty twenty-five oh eight with a recommendation that the City Council approve the resolution and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement regarding the residential target area development and conditional certificate for housing on apartments. House on apartments applied for and received director eligibility approval for an eight-year multifamily tax exemption. Project is located within the Lakewood Station District residential target area, which allows for an eight- or twelve-year multifamily property tax exemption. The proposed project meets all requirements defined in Lakewood Municipal Code three point six four, property tax exemptions for multifamily housing. The project has been designed for workforce housing with efficient studio and one-bedroom apartments focused on functionality and affordability. The project adds forty new market rate residential units with forty-seven parking spots. The client has signed the agreement regarding the residential target area. Uh, alternative, really, this is not one we look at with an alternative. The alternative should say kind of not applicable as this is procedural. Fiscal impact, the property tax collection will increase upon completion of the tax exemption period.
Very good. Any questions? Mr. Bokey.
Mr. Remack, um, so eight-year property tax exemption, no requirements for affordable units because it's pretty much affordable housing, it sounds like. It mentions that we're workforce housing and whatnot in there.
The, the belief would be that, yes, it's market rate housing, so whatever the market rate would be for workforce-style housing.
And what's, do, do you know approximately, I mean, I'm looking at the, the chart of the tax revenue with and without this project, what, what approximately is the value of the project?
Let me, let me take a moment. You talking the valuation of construction?
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
I do not know that off the top of my head.
Okay. How much?
Four point eight million. It's on page four twenty-two, Councilmember.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Four twenty-two. I missed that. Thank you. Okay, that's all I got.
Mr. Branstadter, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I, I guess that I would refer to the chart that Mr. Bokey, uh, spoke to. And I guess that I would, it's, it's the chart that's on page four twenty-six of our packet. And it, uh, it, 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 it shows, uh, tax revenue, or it shows, it shows revenue that will, will accrue, um, and if, if the project is not built, and we're talking about incentivizing to get it built. And then it shows the revenue that would, would, would accrue, uh, in the various years, um, if the, uh, if the project is built with the, the tax incentive. And I, and I guess that, well, while I would say that that's good, I, it's, it's that, my concern with this chart is it's not truly transparent. Because there's a third option. There's a third option is if we don't provide a multifamily tax exemption, and then they build the project anyway. And in, in our history, all three things have happened in the past. We have had projects that have applied for multifamily tax exemptions, and, uh, we have said no for whatever reasons. And then they built them anyway. So there is a, a third option on, and I would, would say that in, as we want to evaluate things, things wouldn't have good transparent data that for future projects, future charts should show all three options. Okay, so we can really see, and quite frankly, so that the community can see, um, that it's not if, without a tax exemption, tax revenue will, will be lost. That's not necessarily true. On the other hand, we have had things that have inquired about tax exemptions or, and then when, when, when we said no, we weren't going to do the things to do that, and then they didn't build them. And so then, then this, this project is there. Um, because for some projects, the tax exemption is an important element of penciling out a project to incentivize getting it built, to be able to go and do that. So I would just point out that, you know, I would, in, in future considerations of projects for tax exemptions, I'd like to see a more transparent chart that shows all three options as opposed one that is less transparent and seems designed to sell it to us. I have one other concern with the packet, okay? Um, and that has to do with page four twenty-three. And, um, the, the, four twenty-three is a chart, is, is, is a map, okay? That shows where the residential target areas in the city are, which are the areas where multifamily tax exemptions are allowed. And with respect to this project, it clearly shows where it is inside the Lakewood Station District RTA, and that's the only thing that's, that's germane to this project. But I would say that this, this chart, if we're using it to communicate to developers, shows the Central Business District RTA, uh, with areas that are still under that aren't yet in it, okay? Uh, and, and that there has been a lot of discussion in the community as to whether on the west side of the Gravity Lake Drive between Onstadio and Creek and Clover Creek, of whether those parcels are going to be in the RTA. But we seem to have created a chart that shows somebody's vision, but not necessarily a reality that, that the council has put in place. And so, you know, it, it, I think it's, it's, it's important as we're, as we're, as we're going through to, 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 to look at that, that we're communicating with the development community, with, with the greater community about where RTAs are. And when they are, and then, then when there is a change, is that's when you make a new, a, 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 a new map. But that, but this particular page doesn't, doesn't do that. Um, neither of those things, uh, affect my feeling that this is a good multifamily tax exemption-based project. Um, because it's a, uh, it's, uh, workforce housing, and we have discussed over the years, the housing that Lakewood really needs. And there have been certain categories of housing that we really need, that we want to incentivize. And one is increasing density in places that, that doesn't displace anyone, and that this project is not displacing anyone. Because what is there is, 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 is not being used for residential purposes. And, and when it was, it was only a single, uh, a, a single residence, and it's not in, 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 in shape to be rehabilitated to go forward. It, it also is work, workforce housing, and it's the one-bedroom and studio things over there. So even though it's market-based, it's going to be on the low end of market-based costs to be able to go and do that. And there are several workforces in the city that would benefit from that kind of housing, particularly in that location, for instance. It would be, it would, 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 would be something for, um, young folk just getting started in, in, in a workforce to be able to, 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 to afford to do that. It would be compatible for, uh, sharing of, 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 of a unit for folks to do that. That could be important for a variety of workforces, including, uh, you know, you know, or working military personnel from JBLM that, that, that we have found, and, and they tend to look at, to be able to go and do that. Um, and, and while that's not, uh, you know, and while the, the, uh, the folks in Olympia would, 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 would want to say that the, the, the highest priority is to try to find affordable housing that, 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 you know, for Lakewood, senior housing, uh, workforce housing, and filling some housing in so that people who are in our lowest-cost housing can improve their lot and want to move up, that there's, there's a house, some housing in the middle to be able to go and do that, you know? We've talked always about our, and we're one of the few communities that have an inverted bell curve in terms of the, the income of, of our family. And this is a, uh, thing that both for location, the type of housing, um, and it, it ma- makes good sense to incentivize to be certain that it, it gets built or increase the, the likelihood of it. And I'm certainly going to support any granting the tax exemption in this case.
Before we get to the discussion part, I just want to make sure we don't have any other questions of Mr. Remack, because we don't have a motion on the table yet. So any other questions for Mr. Remack? Okay, very good. Do we have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, seconded by Councilmember Pearson, that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. Uh, now, any further discussion? Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll echo, I, I guess I won't belabor, but, um, echo many of the sentiments from Mr. Branstadter. I think that this is a great project. I think it's right in the area that we want to incentivize this kind of housing. Um, you know, he, he brought up the, the, the options that we could not, and see if they build it and, you know, or grant it, or, or just leave it vacant. And, and I think today's a, a bit different than times of the past where things are more expensive and people are trying to get as creative as they can to, to build housing. And I think right now we really want more housing. So, um, this checks all the boxes for, for me, and, um, think it's a great project to, to get on the books here.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, without belaboring the accolades that this actually fills the bill, so to speak, for what we seek for an incentive for development, this is the right area and seems to be the right project. So thank you, Mr. Remack and your team for their work. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has been adopted. That concludes the action items. Any other unfinished or new business, Mr. Caulfield?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Great. We'll turn to your report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Uh, just a couple of updates and then maybe just touch bases on your calendar. Um, so Chief Smith asked me to pass along, uh, have a real quick, um, crime stats update through, uh, April thirtieth of, of this year, which basically takes us through a third of the year. And, um, through that period of time, overall, crime is down by another twenty-two plus percent, uh, including violent crime, which is down by twenty percent. That also includes a significant decrease of twelve percent in the area of aggravated assaults. Also, property crime is down by almost twenty-three percent, which includes, um, a continued decline in motor vehicle thefts, down another sixty-seven percent. Uh, burglary is down forty-two percent, robbery is down twenty-eight percent. So, uh, we continue to see that downward trend building upon what occurred in two thousand twenty-four when we saw the most significant drop in our crime rate in a long, long time of nineteen percent. So, um, just, uh, wanted to pass that on and express my gratitude for Chief Smith and, um, the whole, uh, LPD Police Department for the great work that they do day in and day out. Um, secondly, um, uh, Gim Hay, our sister city, uh, you might remember they paid us a visit last summer and, um, came out here. Well, they, they would like to come back again this summer and participate in Summerfest. Caveat this time is, given that they were so impressed with how they were, uh, treated and, and, uh, the activities and, and, and the itinerary that we had for them, uh, they would like to do something very, very special for the Lakewood community. And, um, what they want to do is they would like to bring a, um, authentic, uh, K-pop, K-pop band to Lakewood as part of Summerfest. And, uh, those of you who might be or not familiar with K-pop, it is, um, apparently the rage of all, uh, young and, uh, even not-so-young people. And it is, uh, uh, quite, quite the entertainment. And, um, so they have, uh, put together a proposal to come visit with us. Um, from a financial standpoint, the cost to host them, because that's, you know, that's, that's our responsibility, uh, to host them and to also help with their local transportation is about eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, your current budget already includes twelve thousand dollars that was set aside for a trip to the Philippines. However, that has not yet materialized, and we haven't heard from them. However, that has not yet materialized and we haven't heard from them, whether or not you're going to get an, get an invitation. So that leaves a delta of about six thousand dollars. I know Mayor Whalen mentioned to me earlier this evening that perhaps LTAC dollars could be used. Even though LTAC dollars have not been allocated, if we can get the LTAC committee together in the next week or two to consider that, then that would provide the forty-five day state law requirement that it has to kind of sit before it can come back to you as, as a consideration for action. That's presuming the LTAC committee does, it does approve it. So unless there's any objection, we'd like to pursue that. But even if the LTAC dollars doesn't come through, you know, Mayor, maybe under council comments, you could give me kind of some direction on if this is something that you want to do. And we can move forward and then follow up with a, a budget adjustment on, on, again, the delta of the funding there. So again, just wanted to pass that on to you, a great opportunity. And again, further strengthening the relationship that we have with our, our sister city of Gimhe. As it relates to your calendar, the month of May is a very, very busy month. Kicking off later this week on Wednesday is the Pierce County Law Enforcement Memorial Event, which will be held this year in University Place at our church, which is on Sixty-seventh Avenue. A week from Saturday is our youth fishing event at Harry Todd Park. And then on May twenty-first, Lhasa is having their friend raising breakfast event at the McGavick Center. That same afternoon, Clover Park High School will have their Arlington Project at four P M. The next day, on Thursday, May twenty-second, SSMCP is having their Elected Officials Council Biennial Event at Eagles Pride Golf Course. Later in the morning, Puget Sound Regional Council is having their annual general assembly at the Seattle Convention Center. And then on Memorial Day, there is the two thousand twenty-five Joint Services Memorial Day Ceremony that's sponsored by Mountain View Funeral Home and the Pierce County Veterans Advisory Council. And that'll be held over at Mountain View Memorial, their, their memorial park that they have dedicated for their Garden of Honor for, for our fallen veterans. And then on May twenty-eighth, down at the Fort Stillicum Park Pavilion is our volunteer recognition event, an opportunity to celebrate and recognize all the volunteers and all the great work that they do here in the Lakewood community. The next day, if the council's so inclined, I know the city clerk has been working with you on this, on May twenty-ninth, is a kind of a follow-up to your retreat, is to do a tour of some community centers. And that would essentially be an all-day event from eight-thirty till about four. And we've identified four, the Star Center in Tacoma, the Auburn Community Events Center, Renton Family First, and then the Eastside Community Center. So that'd be a busy day for you. Later on that afternoon is the tenth annual Lakes High School Student Celebration of Art, again, over at St. Clair Hospital. Then on May thirtieth, on Friday, is our Street Festival at the Colonial Plaza. And then that runs into the kickoff of the Farmer's Market, which kicks off on Tuesday, June third. So with that, that's, that's, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mr. Caulfield, so, so that I understand about the potential LTAC funding for, that, that we would be asking the LTAC to fund the costs to bring the K-pop group, which would then be a, a, a draw for people to come, particularly if we advertised it rightly, it would increase the numbers at Summerfest for, for sure if they were going, going to approve. And that would be the, how we would frame it to the, to the LTAC?
Generally speaking, Councilmember, yes.
Well, I think that's, I, I, I think that, that, that's a good idea, you know? Gimhe did invite us to a, an event that we were, weren't able to, earlier this year, to be able to go. So, so that took to be able to do that. And it would be, them coming this year would not be in lieu of them being, having representation from all four sister cities next year for our thirtieth anniversary Summerfest.
Very good. Thank you. So before I turn to full council comments while we're on this topic, we want to give the manager some consensus, whether that's a good idea, whether or not we have any other sister city opportunities this year that would be in lieu of this. Doesn't sound like we do, because we haven't heard back from Benong yet. And I don't think Gimhe has an event planned for us to attend this fall. That was earlier this spring. So what's, what say you? I see, I have no idea what K-pop is, but it sounds like it's a musical thing, musical group or whatever that people enjoy.
It's a genre of music.
They say I've seen it, so that's good. So what about consensus to have the manager pursue an application through LTAC? Are you okay with that for the delta, the difference? Yeah, okay, very good.
Thank you, Mayor, and we'll get that going this week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sure it'll be great. Okay, why don't we go to council comments? Oh, sure, for Mr. Caulfield, you bet. One more question, Mr. Caulfield.
Mr. Caulfield, the police stats that you sent, if you haven't already sent those to our email, could you send those out?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be in a future report that I'll have for you.
Oh, and Mr. Pearson has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Caulfield, do you have any updates on the sewer work that's going to be occurring on Bridgeport yet?
So, Councilmember, yeah, they, they started their potholing and now they're going to be doing the diversion. And so it's, it's kind of stop and go. That's kind of where we're at. They, they have a website. That's, that's kind of where we're getting our information from on a, on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
They are, they are progressing with it, so I think the good news is that they're not, they're not going to have to tear up all the, they're not going to have to tear up the roadway, that they're going to be doing the maintenance by going in on, you know, the, the, the manholes and, and, and doing the, the lining that way rather than tearing up the road.
So we shouldn't anticipate long-term road closures of any kind?
I, I can't, I can't speak to that, Councilmember. That I can't speak to.
Are you looking for a promise?
Want to see what's going on?
Yeah. Okay, very good. Well, let's go ahead and, and go through council comments. We'll start with Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be, I'll be short. Great, great work tonight on a number of really important items to move forward on things like Ward's Lake Park and our transportation things and all this going on. So very good work. And other than that, don't, it sounds like in a lot of events, and I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to make, make them all. And they're all in one week, so maybe work something out. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to, again, recognize all the proclamations we made tonight. It was, it was food, it was water, it was safety, it was sewers. They're all important things, not just sewers, but all of Public Works. They're the things that, that keep us safe and make our lives a little more comfortable. So thanks to all the organizations that were a part of that exercise. Specifically, I also want to appreciate Planning and Public Works' efforts to optimize, make more efficient and drive continuous improvement and having that mindset as they're going through things and cleaning up our codes. I think that's really important that we're consistent as we, as we reach out to the public and, and keep folks engaged and keep ourselves accountable for doing things the correct way. And then I'll echo what Mr. Branstadter, Mr. Pearson and the mayor said about the MFTE approval. It's good to see the program working as it's intended to, and we're getting housing in near public transit, which is really important. So kudos for that as well. And then last week, I attended the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council Meeting and learned what other local jurisdictions are doing with their funds and how they're planning to, to divvy those out and assign them. Everyone's still really early in the process, ourselves included. And I shared how Lakewood is utilizing our Community Services Advisory Board and our Youth Council as our organization to manage that going forward. So I'm happy to, to share that we have a plan and that we are marching forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Branstadter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, it, it sounds like you all did a lot of work on the twenty-first at that meeting study session. And so I apologize for, 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 for not, for not, not, not being here. It, 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 it turns out that where I was in, 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 in Canada, computers didn't work. So I wasn't even able to listen in and be able to, 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 to go and do that. That, you know, I, I, I did attend the South Sound Military County Community Partnership Event around education that was, that, that was held and, and was coordinated by, by, by the folks that were there. And there were, you know, probably ninety attendees, okay, there to be able to go and do that. And a couple of takeaways is that there are lots of people and groups that have, that, that, that recognize the, the children and military families is those as, as having unique situations that they have to cope with. In that there are a lot of things, including school districts and other, other organizations to do that. But the, the, one of the, the, the takeaways that, 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 that came away, particularly from some of the military officers that were there, is that that's very unusual, that the off-base community is concerned about military kids in terms of being able to go and do that. In that, you know, of, of the eight school districts that were, that, that, that were represented at the meeting, the, the, the two library districts, a number of mental health organizations and that, they all looked, looked forward and, and had good stories about working together. One of the things that was impressive to me is that, you know, the, the Cohen Clinic that we have here that provides mental health thing for, for veterans and military families to be able to go and do that. And there were about twenty-some of those clinics established around the country from the, the Cohen, by the Cohen Foundation back when they went to do that. But this one here in Lakewood is the only one that has a significant initiative towards military children in partnership with schools of being able to be in schools, to be able to go and do that. And, you know, it, it, it kind of helped everybody at that meeting to get ahead about, we see a problem, we have, we see a need, we're, we're, we're working towards it. But we are far ahead of most of the, most of the communities in the country in terms of, 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 of addressing the needs of that particular subgroup in terms of going on. I, I, I do, I do a plan to attend the, the May seventh Pierce County Police Memorial Organization. I go to do that. And one of the things that I always appreciate about that is, 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 it, it also has a unique thing around the supporting the military in that while there is such, such activities take place around the country that the one here is the only one that I know of through talking with my other former folks from the Military Police Regiment, where the local police also honor all of the military police from the neighboring installations that have lost their lives while, while, while in, in performance of their duties, whether there was in Iraq or locally or being able to go and do that. And that's, that's, so that's something that I, with my background, I, I greatly appreciate that Pierce County takes, makes, makes that effort in, in, in any equate, the, 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 the folks who do law enforcement work in the, in the military with, 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 with other first responders to be able to go and do that. And I, and I do, I do a plan to attend the, the, the event at St. Clair with the art. Because that's, that's one of those events that I always enjoy going and, 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 and being amazed at, to be able to go through and do that. And I'll probably get to some of the other things on the, on the, on the city manager's laundry list. I just haven't figured that out yet.
Thank you, Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went to the Nothing But Cake Grand Opening. That was great. The, if you're ever in the need for a tasty treat, they are delicious. And so brought my son there. He enjoyed one and we brought one home for the wife and Ada. And yeah, they're, they're fantastic. So a great little location over there. It's like that's the sweet corner of the town center. We got Nothing But Cakes and the cookie place next door, just down the way. But yeah, great, great to see another good business in there. I have with SSMCP and PSRC, the Grand Assembly, tho- those are conflicts, so I don't know. I'm planning on going to the SSMCP kind of breakfast event and I won't be able to make it up to the General Assembly for PSRC. So I don't know if anyone can take my spot on that or if they want to or not. But that's up for grabs, I guess, if someone does want to go.
I think that can be virtual too, I believe, right? The General Assembly?
The General Assembly is the in-person.
Oh, in-person?
I think you maybe could sign in online, but it's more of an in-person annual event.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Thanks. Did not, I did try the Nothing But Bun Cake, but I missed the ribbon cutting. They're very good. So yes, everyone try them. I know there's a couple other ribbon cuttings, I think UPS store was also this week. So that was awesome. Love to see all that. I did attend the Lakeview Light and Power Annual Meeting for the council, so that was really good to hear. The whole room was packed. It was full. It was nice to see everybody here. Great reports from the general manager there about their energy savings, what their goals were. The really, the best takeaway that I love is that they give away quite a bit of scholarships. So they honored the students there that night. And I just think it was a really good meeting and really good feedback from the community. And it was nice to see a bunch of people there that are really concerned about just what's going on. And then I also wanted to say that I appreciated the people speaking at Public Comment tonight. It's always a great venue to say what, you know, you want to get out. And we had a lot of diversity with our Public Comment tonight, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo what has been said before, but I will also talk about parks appreciation. They, we had a, I attended the cemetery area and they had about sixty-five or seventy people there to participate. And of all the numbers that we found early on, I think it was even before I was a member of the council, we went out and cleared out the blocks that had numbers on them. And so now they have identified a lot of those, I think it was a hundred thirty-six, that are now have a name to them and that are flagged there. So great work has been done. They have a lot of great plans to do more. And I think it's like a hundred and thirty-six spots there. And there's some that we'll never be able to identify because of the nature that that happened. But good turnout and the tour of the H Barn was very interesting. I appreciated that to see what can be. They showed a video of like a, a slide of what it can look like and what can be done in those areas. And so looking forward to more on that. I did attend a Promise Board meeting. And tomorrow I will be, I have students coming from the Dr. Thomas Middle School to tour the, the building, the city building. And they want to know, they want to hear me talk about what I do as a deputy mayor for the city of Lakewood. So it'll be interesting. Hopefully I can get some support from, if anybody else from the council wants to join. It's at four o'clock tomorrow. So.
Where is this? What, what is it again?
Here. And the Thomas School of Students will come at four o'clock.
Okay.
Just want to hear about what we do, how we do it. And you just want to hear about what we do, how we do it, and why we do it kind of thing. So other than that, that's all I have.
You can tell them the why, which is you enjoy three and a half hours every Monday night.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Important for that. Okay, well, you know, it certainly has been a busy, busy week. In terms of things, I attended the H Barn tour, which was on Saturday, the 26th, was really well done. Kudos to staff for that. It is a project that's coming to fruition. I was actually more excited after the site visit and the brief overview of the initial sort of design, very rough. But the design that'll be very inclusive of an event space or spaces for multiuses for various groups in Lakewood. And I think that'll be great because it's something different from the large McGavick Center, which serves a certain population. And this will provide opportunities for other smaller groups and neighborhood associations and the like. So I'm looking forward to that. The Nothing Bunt Cakes grand opening was on Tuesday. I attended that, very much enjoyed meeting the new owners who were excited about coming to Lakewood. They really appreciated their work with staff to get the place open in terms of the permit activity. So that was always great to hear. And in terms of, you know, the cookies and the bunt cakes and stuff, Councilmember Pearson, there are two gyms close by too, including a new one. Planet Fitness had just opened, which is actually beautiful. If you haven't had a chance to go look at it, it's another new business here in Lakewood, which is great. So do the bunt cake, do the cookies, walk down the street. One of the two gyms there. Coffee House with the mayor was on Wednesday. That was West Pierce Fire and Rescue provided an overview of emergency preparedness, emergency management activities. Was not as well attended as we might hope, but perhaps it was because it was rescheduled. I do think that that is a good forum for folks to kind of come and share. We talked about other issues as well. Thank you to Mr. Remack and other staff members for being there, including the Chief of Police. On Saturday then, after a little run around the lake, EFN was setting up for their Hunger Walk. I didn't actually walk the event, but I met a lot of folks who were there walking the event. Again, a wonderful opportunity for people to enjoy Fort Silicon Park and certainly for us to provide a venue for raising funds for a great purpose. And that's hunger awareness and the hunger folks, the Hunger Walk rather, in Lakewood. Then later that afternoon, I went to the Samoan Academic and Cultural Competition held at Mount Tahoma High School at the behest of the leader of the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, Lure Pritchard. She was emphatic that, you know, Lakewood be represented there. So I made sure I got there and made some comments for the benefit of the students. It was not just for their display of the wonderful cultural dance and other activities that they were competing for honors for, but also to recognize the importance of sustaining community, to build up youth, and to remind them that they can set expectations for themselves and their peers, both culturally and academically. And it was just a great, great event. So I enjoyed that. I will attend the Law Enforcement Memorial Event this coming week. I have a Lake City Association meeting as well coming up. And then Friday, I have like the entire day with back-to-back, looks like interviews of folks who are applying for the American Lake Management District position. We have an open position. And it must be filing week one way or the other because we've got one, two, three, four, five, six people who are seeking to fill that position. Anytime there's significant interest, I do try to make myself available to interview folks, ask some questions about their interest, to at least thank them for applying and take 10 minutes with each of them. So I've got that set up all morning on Friday. And then there's the Economic Development Board Directors Meeting at the Hotel Murano. And then the manager and I have a meeting with the Pierce County Executive to discuss some potential use of county property here in the Springbrook area. And so it's going to be a busy week. And I do work a full day. So. Public comment tonight. I agree. It was very, very helpful. It's always good to see. I was a little obviously concerned, as we all are when we hear concerns by esteemed members of our various boards and commissions about cultural issues and activities in our police department. I can just say in response, thank you for the comment, Mr. Brown. I don't have nearly the details that others may, but I did read the article in the paper today. And it sounds like actions were taken by Lakewood Police Department leadership to address those concerns. And matter apparently went to arbitration. There was a different decision made by the arbitrator. But nonetheless, we appreciate the public comment and the concern and the recognition that there is a standard to uphold with regard to employee relations and activities. So that is what I have for public, or my comment. Deputy Mayor, did you have?
Just for the record, I just wanted to say that Councilmember Bokey and I did attend the UP Open Thursday.
The UPS store?
UPS Store.
Absolutely. Certainly.
Since we're having a couple of go-backs here.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, when the deputy mayor talked about Parks Appreciation Day, it reminded me that we hadn't met since then. So I wanted to give another special shout out to our parks staff because it was very well put together. I had a chance to go to Edgewater Park and Springbrook Park and Fort Silicon Park. And we had great volunteers from the city. People came out in droves to help improve their public spaces. And I think that's really important to recognize. So thanks to our park staff and our residents for showing up.
Well, and it's a bit of foreshadowing on the Edgewater Park piece because we received notice that we got about, what, $3.7 million worth of state grants for the benefit of Edgewater Park. And it's improvements consistent with the master plan that was approved last year, I believe, by the council. So that's all good stuff. So with that, I will advise that the council will recess into executive session for 15 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101 sub I to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation. We will not take action following the executive session other than to come out and to adjourn the meeting. So at this time, we are in recess. So, at this time, we are in recess.